Good afternoon, everybody. We will be having our meeting. Except we're waiting for one more board member to go ahead and have quorum. So if you can bear with us, we should be starting here in a few more minutes. Thank you.
Hey. Nope, you're, you're in now.
Good afternoon, board members, college staff, guests, and everyone that is on the call. We're ready to start our meeting. The time is 6:18 on this, the 27th day of January 2022. And I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Justices to order. Mr. Delgado, can you do the prayer and then Judge Martinez can you do the pledge allegiance?
Thank you.
Please stand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for our faculty, for our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and, most importantly, their confidence in our leadership. Please grant us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make the decisions that are for the good of all those and guard us from blind self-interest. Grant us a humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Delgado, can you please call roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Tita Cantubela?
Here.
Ms. Karina Lisondo?
Present.
Mr. Semen Angel? Absent. Dr. Henry Carranza? Absent. Judge Mercurio Martinez?
Present.
Ms. Cynthia Maris?
Present.
Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos?
Absent.
Jorge Delgado, present, and Ms. Lupita Cepeda.
Present.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. But the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval of the minutes for the November 30th and the special board meeting on December 7th as well as the meeting that was held on the 28th of December.
A second.
Judge Martinez makes a motion to approve the minutes and second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Number four is public testimony. Do we have any? No public testimony. Thank you. Number five is recognition, communication, introduction of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. The first item is Laredo College Physical Therapists Assistant Program accreditation. Dr. Diane Miller slash Dr. Esmeralda Vargas. Dr. Miller here?
Madam Chair, we have Dr. Esmeralda Vargas and faculty and advisory council member of the Physical Therapy Assistant Program who have a very good announcement to share.
Okay.
Sorry, my pleasure.
Welcome.
Thank you for the record. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Rodriguez de Herina, for the record, I'm Dr. Esmeralda Vargas, PTA Program Director and Professor. I have Ms. Yolanda Guzman, Academic Coordinator of Clinical Education, faculty member, and Dr. Fernando Vargas, Advisory Committee Member, joining me this evening. I just wanted to say a couple of words. Probably most people in this room know that going through reaffirmation, reaccreditation is a very arduous process. But through the Commission of Accreditation and Physical Therapy Education, also known as CAPTIA, deemed the PK program here at Laredo College to fulfill all of the standards and required elements required for accreditation, and that is an amazing accomplishment. Basically, it means we don't have a compliance report to write, which is pretty great. So we were able to achieve this, first of all, through the grace of God, but through very dedicated faculties such as Ms. Guzman, Jacqueline Villaln, through the support of our advisory committee members who provide valuable feedback through our clinical partners who are both here in Laredo, outside of Laredo, as well as the Laredo Colleges Administration. I specifically want to recognize or thank Dr. Miller for her reassurance and her advice throughout the self-study process to Dr. David Ariasola, Dr. Veronica Martinez for their valuable feedback in reviewing the self-study report, to Dr. Rodriguez de Herina for her unwavering support of the PK program, as well as Dr. Brexol, he's in all of the staff that falls under Student Support Services because of what they do. They help the PK program to achieve its mission. So thank you all for your support and just for being a part of us achieving this success. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Solis. Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Any, anyone else would like to say anything? Any board member? Congratulations and thank you. Next item is Laredo College Emergency Response Management Program. Mr. Roberto Hernandez?
Good evening, board members, colleagues, Roberto Hernandez, Dino Workforce Education. We're happy to announce that the recent proposal for a new AAS award in Emergency Response Management was approved by THCCB. This program is scheduled to start this fall. And we just received notice a few weeks ago that our proposed fire protection and safety AAS award was also approved by THCCB, and that's also scheduled to start in the fall semester. And then even more recently, we were approved as a training facility by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. Right, so Laredo College is now a certified training facility for both in-person and distance online education for fire protection.
That's quite an achievement. Congratulations.
The benefit of being a certified facility is that we'll be able to certify the fire, the students that are coming out through the program. They'll be able to take the state certification exam.
Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
Congratulations, Roberto Hernandez. I know it takes a team, a whole group effort, but nonetheless outstanding work on everyone's part. So therefore, going back to the point that you just made, so we're not going to become an academy, are we?
No, ma'am.
Police academy, but we could one day, maybe.
We, I mean, in the future, it's a possibility, but it is very costly because of the equipment that we have to maintain. And so the better option for us would be just to partner like we're doing with the city are using their facilities and us providing instruction through them.
Oh, okay. Okay. So I have a little bit confused. So you're going to be those that are already going through the academy that need to get certified in some aspect or finish their training or before they join the academy?
So it can work both ways. So students who decide to go through the program will take the certification courses as college students are using the fire department facilities. And then when they're done with their, with their courses, they can sit for the state exam. Like, they would still have to go through the academy if they get hired by the, by the city, but they would already have gotten through that certification process.
Very good. Congratulations again.
Thank you. And just to add to that, being a certified facility also opens up the opportunities through our continuing education side to provide trainings for the surrounding areas.
That's excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again.
Very good. Any other board member? Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Next item is 5C, Jobs and Education for Texans, JET Grant. Dr. Nora Oregarza, Mr. Gabriel Lozano, and Mr. Francisco Ramirez.
Good evening, Gabriel Lozano, grant writer.
Department Chair Transportation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just pleased to announce a grant that was awarded to Laredo College in the amount of $304,836 from the Texas Workforce Commission under the Jobs and Education for Texans Program or JET. And this is strictly an equipment grant, but it's going to go to buying And this is strictly an equipment grant, but it's going to go to buying training equipment for our diesel mechanic program at the South Campus.
Awesome. Good work in putting it together. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. So this is huge, you know, because we get to upgrade our, our training, our training, you know, tractors and engines and all those things. Hopefully, we can, we're talking outside, we can get the things as soon as possible, so we.
Let the market check quickly, so we can spend it. All right. Good job. Very good job. Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate. Congratulations again.
And I'm going to also announce the next one. This grant is from, was awarded to the LC Education Foundation in the amount of $7,000 for the Latina Entrepreneur Academy. This grant, again, comes from the Lulac Foundation and the Coca-Cola Foundation. And I'm just going to read a little narrative on this. This unique collaborative project between the Lulac Foundation, the Coca-Cola Foundation, and the LC Economic Development Center and the Resource Development External Affairs Division will provide exceptional training for 40 individuals, Hispanic women, and include books, supplies, knowledgeable guest speakers, a possible incentive, and a certification, a certificate of recognition. Attendees will learn the importance of branding, networking, accounting, management, and other topics. As part of the program prerequisite, those who enroll also learn the need, will learn how to complete a business plan in order to graduate. Again, this was for $7,000 and ordered to, well, ordered to Laredo College through the education.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
There's a lot of, yeah, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a lot of opportunities, you know, for Latinas out there. And I was in a webinar yesterday with an individual who opened up her company and having very little experience in the retail arena. And she was selling a certain product, one of a homemade salsa. And so what she did, she said, I entered a contest and, you know, that HB was doing, you know, stay one, whatever. She said, that one second place, and then I was given all this money, you know, and she says, okay, so what do I do now with this money? And so she had to, she went to the resources in her community she stipulated. And a lot of them were, you know, we have them here, the Laredo Development Foundation, they're called now the Economic Foundation, and resource centers that'll help you. And what you do is you enroll like in a program or a class. And then, you know, you graduate from that training, but they teach you how to do a business plan. They teach you how to work on a budget. And she said, of course, that would have taken money on my, on my pocket, but since I won that award, so. She says, but there's an immense, immense, you know, unlimited, I guess, of opportunities out there for Latina women to engage in entrepreneurship and start their own businesses and or just better themselves in whatever profession they're in.
And this is, you know, we're starting with 40, but I mean, we're always looking to get it, you know, grow it and find other funding sources. You know, since this is a collaborative effort, we're going to try to get as many people to buy in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Next item is by the introduction of personnel, personnel actions. Dr. Maricela de Herina.
Today, board members, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our new dean of South Campus who I asked to be here. Ms. Priscilla Medina, can please come to the podium and not to put her on the spot, but she's been with us and has served in multiple positions. And she's not new to administration, so we have full confidence in her to serve as our dean for the South Campus.
Priscilla Medina, for the record, I want to thank you all for the opportunity given to me to go ahead and be your dean of the South Campus. I look forward to working with the staff and faculty. I'm already taking turns going out to every individual building. I want to get to know every room, every, every door. And, but I do want to mention something that I really, I really liked in looking at the South Campus and knowing what the buildings, the rooms, the occupancy. H-SOC has done a very good job, and I do want to mention Dr. David, thank Dr. David Ariasola and Javier Cano, because I want to work on looking at the evacuation plans, assembly points, in case there's an emergency, in case there's something. And the H-SOC team has done a tremendous job in already preparing a handbook where they outlay every room, every evacuations, every evacuation plan, every, every type of a set. So I really am fortunate that going into this position that there's somebody, something that's there already available and that I can work with them. And so I do look forward in making sure that the campus is safe at all times and welcoming all the students from the community and the schools and everybody so that they can feel safe in coming to the South Campus. Because I believe the South Campus is a beautiful campus, just the same as for Macintosh, but the South Campus has special meaning to me. So I thank you for the opportunity to work for you as the dean of the South Campus. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I do also want to recognize who are not here but may be on Zoom. Awesome is Bianca Brewster is our new Environmental Science Center Director, Emmanuel Villanueva, who got a promotion as Lead Lab Coordinator, Miguel Flores as Workforce Development Coordinator, Monica Santa Cruz as Workforce Development Coordinator, Angelica E. Cabral as Faculty Secretary for the Homeland Security and Cybersecurity Institute, Nancy Colchado at the Allied Health Lab Coordinator for the South Campus, Brenda Diaz as the upward bound academic advisor, Juan M. Garcia as the Electrical Technology Lab Coordinator, Elizabeth Gloria as the Associate Degree Nursing Instructor, Matthew Jesse as our new Art Instructor, Maria I. Martinez as the Academic and Career Advisor, Anissa Moreno as the Faculty Secretary for the Nursing Programs, and David Ramirez as our new Automotive Collision Repair Instructor.
Congratulations to all. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you, Dr. Medina. The next item is the Faculty Senate Report. Mr. Cash Manson Honey?
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Per Cash Manson Honey, and I am the President of the Faculty Assembly. And this year I have actually gained a new title, and this year I'll become a professor of government from associate professor to professor of government, having served in 10 years in the position. Well, I've been at the college for 18 years. 10 of those were dedicated to that particular. I told my students the other day, it doesn't make me better, it just means I've been here a bit for a long time. Real quick, I just wanted to give you three updates that the faculty are working on. Number one, one of the things, talking about tenure and serving for many years, my predecessor's name, of course, was Dr. Sinbiko. She may have come to this board before and talked about a project that she started years ago with others called the Memorial Brick Project. And that project serves or seeks to honor faculty who have served the college for 20 or more years. And she got quite a bit of that project moving forward into its, into its creation. And so I invite all of you all to come to the memorial hall and look in front of the building, and you can see down these plaques. We're working on extending that because there's quite a few faculty who are going to be added to that list. I just want to mention a couple of the faculty who already are installed in there, and you can see them. And if not, we're working on adding more with the physical plant office. Mr. Manuel Blanco, who served for 54 years, Dr. Alejandro Perez, who served for. Left that part out. And over 40 years, Mr. Carlos Flores, who served in the English Department for 50 years. Dr. Hasidu Juarez, who served for 50 years, and also Ms. Kate Creewad, who served in the Mathematics Department for 42 years. And so I just wanted to mention that I'm taking the project over from my predecessor, as she no longer is with the college, and looking to find, you know, see it through to its completion, to honor these employees. And, and hopefully, when we have a next phase of the installation of those bricks, hopefully, as part of our 75th anniversary, we can incorporate that into an event that we can then share with the board and the administration and others as well. Another thing that the Faculty Senate is working on is we're introducing and bringing back some awards that we are going to be giving out to some of our faculties. They're called the Outstanding Teaching Award and the Outstanding Service to the College Award. These are awards that were presented in the past, and we have began the process and are almost done with opening up that, those awards. And we look forward to presenting the recipients of those two prestigious awards to this board and to the college administration in the fall of 2022. So an opportunity to really distinguish and award the faculty who worked so hard in the classroom and is so proud to get some of these efforts that kind of got, you know, sidetracked with COVID and the year of the pandemics. And so when we were focusing on things like, you know, money and other things, no, health and safety, we now get back to some of the building blocks of our Senate and our, and our, and our agenda. And last, I wanted to thank, take a moment to thank Dr. Ariasola, our interim provost, really for having the patience to work with me as, as the Faculty Senate President in his, not new, but row. I, I know he's got to have patience with all my emails. If just a little brick falls the wrong way, I start an email to the provost, and he says, I'm always in a good mood to deal with those emails, and he's done a very good job of working with faculty and really taking their concerns and really addressing them and doing things to, to make life easier for the college. And last, but not least, the same goes to, for Dr. De Herina, who has really kept this college prospering during some of its most trying times, and that cannot be easy. And you have done such an amazing and graceful job at that. So thank you from the faculty and from me personally. And again, to the board, thank you for everything you do to keep this college financially and community safe. Thank you so much.
May I ask?
Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
Trying to think back on that brick project, Cash. Was the community going to be allowed to buy bricks as well? It was only, I forgot, it was only for the.
From, the part that I'm working on would just be for the faculty as far as the other parts of that building. I believe the administration might be able to answer that question, since mine is limited in scope.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Dr. Martinez.
Perhaps you, you know, these faculty members that you just mentioned, of course, that have had been part of this institution for better than 40 years and some of them over 50 years. I think we ought to also, within our, the library or where at the case and center, give them proper recognition. I think it's, it's, they certainly married that, that recognition. We ought to give them.
Yeah, and absolutely. We have that event that we wanted to invite the administration and the board to in unveiling some of these bricks as we add in more. We also want to extend that invitation to the family and to those individual faculty members to be a part of that celebration. And as we continue the project, I'm excited to get to, I mean, that's a lot of time devoted to an institution.
Certainly is.
Yeah, and I'm sure you know quite a few of those names that I mentioned earlier today of faculty that I mentioned, so.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Next item is the Associated Student Organization Report. Do we have somebody? No. No one? Okay. The next one is a Classified Staff Council Report. No, nobody. And the next item is number nine, Consent Agenda. We have 9A is November 2021 Financial Report. Mr. Sessarella?
Madam Chair, I was going to be, Madam Chair, in order.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Maris.
I was just going to move that we approve consented agenda items 9A through 9G. I'm sure it would be each one of them. I'm sure they've all been reviewed by finance committee or something.
Right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, so Mr. Rella, you don't, you're going to come and report? Oh, well, 10A is the fiscal year 2021 Annual Financial Report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. De Herina. For the record, Sessarella, Vice President of Finance. Tonight, we do have, joining us via remote, Mr. Eli Mendoza, partner with the CPA firm of Garcia Gonzalez and Associates. They were the CPA firm that conducted the audit for fiscal year 2021. Let me just see if he's able to hear us. Mr. Mendoza?
Good evening, Mr. Mendoza. Can you hear him? I can hear you. Do you open here? Muffled, a little bit muffled, but.
Mr. Mendoza, the floor is yours.
Jesse, you want to? Okay. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little. I'll go ahead and start our presentation. My name is Eli Mendoza, the partner of Garcia and Thomas and Prof. And would please be here and forward you to the central results of the part. I believe you have been provided with documents in the fact that the financial report is not in the report of conduct of law. So I'll take the eight, ten, eleven, eleven of the report that leads our different test, our first report. The independent art person report is the primary report that we should use for my next statement. And for the hearing, it offers thirty first, twenty twenty one. Would please do report to you that we are, and I'm by five, four, which is a clean report. What is all of this? So this is the best that the center reports, the rest of the reporting, you know, not. And that's all, I think, is in the, of the, of the. If I may, I think I will, I think, brief items of the report. And after that, I will allow time to refer to the method. And also cover the, 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 the report of conduct of law. Page thirteen, page thirteen, one, two, three. If the management discussion and analysis. This is a very good section of the reports that is part of this. It's per effective summary of the complete report. It identifies that it compares two, two years of operation, and it explains the increases and decreases. So, but right now, page thirteen, if you want to refer to that report, is part of my next highlight. When you hear the college net position at the end of August 31st, 2021, was fifty four million, was fifty four one eight million. And there is an increase of, right, one, seven, eighty, one, seven. So I mentioned it a word last year, who are, if I can position, it's, it's better than last year. On a eighteen point seven million, fifteen years compared to last year. So keep in mind that, that the net position means that that is in there, assets, liability. It is all the assets, it's in capital assets, it's in profit, it's in all term liability and pension. I believe for the net of those, the assets, the majority is the, the net position, which is sixty four point eight million. So that is an amount that is definitely a rate of fifteen point seven million compared to the, to the previous year, the federal financial. Thanks. I would like to, I'd like for you, for thank yous. It is thirty four, thirty five, the, the schedule of my question. That is, that's part of the report. It's a, basically, a summary of the financial, of the results of the audit. But beyond that, page, page before, that we register and modify the financial statement. Also, that we found, no, we. From the financial statement, also that we found no material weakness that identified with the purpose of goals. Although we also have no significant that identified specifically material weaknesses. And then also, no matter compliance, that is the material to the financial statement. The end of the sec, the middle section of that, the government state award, in the thing that with regards to the program. We also had, uh, we not identifying clearly. And we did not identify significant indication. We also register a modified report on compliance with the major programs that we got. A troublemaker program for this on the on the file box. So please check here, starting to include financial questions. There is also, uh, I would be using, uh, programized program education that is a big fund. Uh which was a very significant amount in several ways, which was approximately. Uh twenty eight million that you see and about twenty three billion, they included eighteen million, probably eighteen million, that was right. I was reflecting on the financial statement that not operating, uh, revenue and not operating. So we, those are the two programs which were very large programs. Overall, financial, federal financial assistance was twenty eight million dollars. Which is compared to last year, uh, twenty three million dollars, and you had part of the, part of it under federal financial. Once it's standing, so the, uh, the national tax rate here also, I think, is that the, uh, column, the column visors of the lower ex party. So that's added, uh, this was the end of the year. And also we ought to, uh, the certification of the twenty grand, uh, from state funds. When we look at people, we're, uh, before, when we, for the column, uh, we came, we picked, uh, identified a few. Areas that is also directed by management and it could do something areas that it's improved, and those are listed under the report. That's what we want. That's the small picture. And that, uh, there was a few, uh, the last, what, this, uh, committee meeting, right, this is the final report. It's to be the same as the version of it on the. Yeah, this separate report of the first government provide is that represents the various areas that we require to contribute to the board. Uh including what our financial blood out of the responsible investors and also was managed since responsible regard. Also, and we had any difficulties in protecting drive, we just need to require to communicate those to the board. And please to report that we have no significant physical issues we encountered. Uh, well, when we were five, correct, it is not correct. It's not identified, I think, maybe, uh, it's just this year. This agreement with management, which we should report, we have some disagreements with that. And then on the top part, in terms of all the other matters, we had, we had, uh, three different areas. That need to be addressed and also one recommendation that we had from the previous year regarding the. Having possible establishments of fraud, I think, so that's a, a important component of, uh. Protecting and preventing fraud, so that's kind of, uh, best practice, so we're, we're, we're here to create that more possible. For us, the the various, uh, other comments of category addressable questions, uh, hopefully you have had an opportunity to do. Those comments, uh, we, we discussed them with, uh, with Mr. Reda and to staff in detail. And they, uh, when they didn't start it, the process of addressing. And I believe that those are still being addressed, so, uh, the areas that we had were from the capital assets inventory. We had a recommendation of the hourly employee period. And then also on a, uh, regarding a project in four hundred forty thousand. So if you have questions, then I'd also, I'll try and answer those, because that was that all the element information is on. Uh, the differences in what each kind of action is. So if there's questions, I'll begin to address them at six minutes.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Martinez.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Eli, oh, how are you doing, Mr. Mendoza? Uh as always, a very thorough report and and very detailed, and so we appreciate all the time and effort that you did to put into this and. And also want to thank, of course, our staff, who also, I'm sure facilitated this process for you. But it just when I think every year we're gonna be clean, clear and free of any recommendations or any, I know that we have nothing major. And that is also, of course, very good news, uh, to this board, at least to me as well, but, um. And let me just touch, maybe it's Mr. Um, Mr. Bella, we should, I should direct this to, and I'm sorry, because I don't belong to the finance committee, maybe it's already discussed. But the the inventory, I thought a couple of years ago, we, that issue had been brought up and we had already, um. Made a commitment to put in a system of some sort, that we were gonna be inventorying once a year at least, or every six months, I don't recall how. So to see another one here about capital assets and so, so we're not really there, so do you, could you elaborate a little, just very briefly as to what direction we're moving? Do we?
Yes, Mrs. Martinez. This particular item, yes, it has been an item that has been, uh, I think, uh, an item that had, we have been working on. Uh, and we have had those discussions with Mr. Mendoza and his staff regarding the item that came, uh, as part of this review. Uh, and just to give you a, an update on what has been done, uh, we have Duncan, uh, done physical inventories. Um, but the process hasn't been finalized, so our property department or property manager. Uh, has given me an update and they have completed actual inventories of both campuses with the exception. Of some labs at the south campus due to, uh, uh, scheduling conflicts. Uh, but however, what has not happened, they have not, uh, actually reconciled. The the records to our accounting system, that is the key piece that is missing right now. And that is what the auditors are recommending, that is to complete the cycle, that process needs to be be done. So, uh, right now, uh, we do have a plan already for this fiscal year, which is, uh, to, uh, complete that cycle and update the records. Our property, uh, property inventory manager actually has identified, uh, assets that have, that were not found. Uh, so now the process of of going back and reconciling the records that we have. Uh, and then moving forward, uh, as is being recommended by the, uh, auditors is to, uh, do this. Uh, complete cycle on an annual or or every two years, so the plan is to do one campus per fiscal year. So for twenty twenty three, we will focus on the main campus, twenty four will be the south campus. Uh, and then another part of the discussions that came, uh, out of the finance and audit committee meeting was to, uh. Try to automate the process, uh, because, uh, right now we do just have the banner system and part of the, uh, process is manual. So, uh, I did get an update from the, from the property inventory manager and they have actually reached out, uh, to Tammy Yu. Since Tammy Yu also uses Banner to see what software they're using. Uh, and there's cashly in a visit to Tammy Yu to go and see, uh, their system, to see how it operates and and hopefully, uh. Will come forward and bring something to the board, uh, to, for approval, to to get that implemented.
That's awesome, and also like the idea of the fraud hotline, so hopefully we can see that since we had it in our policy, uh, get it up to, you know, up and running as well.
And and as a matter of fact, I, uh, we may already have something that we can implement. Uh, so we'll, we'll be working with Mr. Chavez and his staff to see if if that's a viable option. Uh, and again, we'll bring that information at the February meeting, right now, the plan for the, uh, February board meeting is to present the plan of how we're gonna address these items. Uh, in a report format and present it to the board on the, uh, February board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Esteban Angel has joined our meeting. Mr. Martinez, and then, Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the audit report strongly recommends that the, uh. Part of the personnel and the maintenance be paid every other week rather than, uh, semi monthly and monthly. Uh, and the main reason why, of course, it it does impact, uh, quite a bit of, uh, work on your, on your, on the part of your staff. And at the same time, they also noticed that there were some deficiencies, if I may, uh, refer to it. And and when it came to the actual pay, so, uh, it, one of the things that is highly recommended by them. That, uh, it be modified to every other week to to do the payroll rather than the way it is at the present time. Uh, is that your intention on on getting that done, sir?
Yes, uh, as we discussed in the finance and audit committee, obviously, this this particular item is gonna require some, uh, some time. Uh, as we mentioned at the finance and audit committee meeting, uh, the change will have an impact on how employees get paid, obviously. So it will impact their their pay, because right now, the current system that we have in place, uh, it would pay on the fifteenth and end of month. So, uh, every pay period, employees get paid for eighty six point sixty six hours. Uh, will, uh, in order to make that change, obviously, we would have to go to a biweekly system, which would pay eighty hours or for actual hours work. Uh, to do that, we would need to, uh, pay in arrears, so that modification itself will will have an impact on 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 employees. So we do have to go through the calendar and see where the change could be made, where we can minimize the impact to employees. Uh, and also, one of the things that, uh, I guess the first step that we're we taking is, as was recommended by the committee. Um, to do a survey, uh, to see if this will be across the board and and include, uh. Uh, salaried employees and faculty, or is this something that we just focus on, uh, the hourly employees? Now, as far as the impact on on work, that on the payroll office, yes, uh, there will be an increase, because currently, right now, they just only process. One pay payroll, they run one payroll for the pay period. Uh, now you're looking for, actually, I'm sorry, two payrolls for the month. Uh, now that you're actually looking at a potential of three, three payrolls, in addition to the semi monthly, and we do keep the semi monthly structure also. Uh, but yes, uh, we'll be looking at that, Judge, and like I said, we'll we'll come up with a a plan and present it to the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Mendoza. Turn it on.
Tess, there we go, it was pressed. Uh, just really quick, yes, touching based on on some of those and and, uh, on the finance committee meeting and just to, just to. Tell the rest of the board, we did have a lengthy discussion, the the the, the people that were on the finance committee. Uh, based on that, on the, on the biweekly payroll, I think it is a good thing, you know, for employees that that benefit on on on, uh. On getting paid biweekly, but I do understand that it's gonna put a strain on the payroll office. Because now, like you mentioned, Mr. Rilla, it's not just going to be one payroll, it's gonna be two to three payrolls. So my biggest concern is we need to, we need to find out from the payroll manager, you know, what obstacles does he or she. Uh, see that will be able to, that they're gonna be facing, because the last thing that we want is employees that are not being paid on time. Or are getting paid more or getting paid less, because our payroll department is being stretched too thin. So that's one of the things that, you know, we talked about to make sure that we get the input of the of the payroll manager. That way, uh, they could be able to tell us their feedback, but then also, uh, we also recommend it to be able to send out a survey. To everybody, including administration, you know, uh, classified staff and everybody, to be able to say. You know, would you wanna go into 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 this, uh, into this biweekly payroll? I do understand, I don't know if all classified staff do receive emails or not, and if they don't. Uh, I would want to see at least, uh, the department heads, uh. You know, have a checklist of if they would want to or not, if they decide not to, you know, uh, voice their concern on the survey, that's fine. But just in case of those employees that do not have emails or access to a computer or anything like that, if we could be able to either have a. The department submitted, you know, on paper or something like that, I think that would be a good thing as well. Touching based on the, on the inventory, like I mentioned, you know, I think it's very crucial that, uh, I remember, uh, trustee Delgado. Mentioned a huge, like, you know, we need to have inventory of our assets and like you mentioned, you know, six hundred laptops came in. And we don't have inventory, I mean, we have a certain paperwork of inventory, but it, you know, we don't have it on a database to be able to pull it. Whenever we need it, and I think that is a huge red flag for for our institution to be able not to have access. To our assets, you know, and I do understand that, like, in our entity, uh, you know, they, you know, the inventory, you know, people come in. They just, you know, they scan everything and it uploads to the system, so which I'm thinking that would be an option to be able to look at a system to be able to help. Because I do know that you mentioned to us that pretty much the the guys go out there, they get an inventory on paper. But it's just the time of actually inputting the paper into the computer is not that, they don't have that time to be able to do that. So I think it's very important that we give them the tools, which is a system, so they could be able to go out there and and process this a lot faster. I did, you mentioned right now that you did wanna do a campus per per year?
Yes, that that would be one of the options, again, uh, looking at the resources, uh, we have, uh, three part, uh, I'm sorry, three full-time employees. So looking at the recommendation of doing it annually or every two years, we said, okay, what we can do is do one campus a year. And then we'll go and do the second campus next, the following year.
And just me personally, I think a campus per year is not acceptable. I think that it needs to be the whole institution annually, they need to give us a report on where we're at, and we're at. Ninety percent of of inventory already tagged, ninety five, ninety eight percent, whatever it might be, but. Going every other year, a lot of stuff will, you know, fall into the craps, cracks into like, um. Laptops, you know, computers, you know, whatever it might be desks, you know, I I I don't, I don't think that it's it's acceptable to go every other year. Per 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 south or or main campus, I think we need to look at a system that would be able to do everything once a year, both campuses.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see what, uh, what resources we'll need to do.
And like Ms. Martinez said as well, I think the frontline, uh, the broad hotline is also a very good idea. So, uh, I think overall, I think it was a very good report that we got on the finance meeting. Uh, I think there, some of them are very minimal, some of them are gonna be a bit challenging. But like I said, you know, just come back with recommendations on how we could be able to help the the departments.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Most my turn, oh, just real briefly, not belaboring a point, on the payroll side, it may very well take us a whole cycle or a whole fiscal year, because it is a massive thing. But there's so much out there already that we can beg, borrow, or steal from others that are similar size, that are already doing this and maybe encountered this as well. They had this challenge and they wanted to convert everybody into the biweekly system. And so hopefully, if we could set some target dates after you do your research and analyses and hopefully by the fall of twenty twenty two, we have something to. Roll out and kick out just as well as with the inventory, I am very, you know, also anxious about that, because I've seen it so often in our reports. Every year, it's about the inventory that we haven't cataloged properly, we don't have a grip on things, and that's kind of scary. And it's bothersome, but nonetheless, anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. Having said that, I'd like to move then that we approved the financial report, annual financial report is presented by our external auditors and by our own, uh, chief financial officer, Mr. Reda.
Any discussion? There we go, uh, I couldn't hear myself, but the only thing that I would like to iterate from the other board members is that. You work on a plan of action for the. you work on a plan of action for the inventory and bring it back to us. If there's resources that we need to find money for, then it needs to come back to us as soon as possible because inventory is very important to our college.
And like, I'm sorry, like I mentioned, now, part of the process will be to provide a written report to the board, not just the assets, but the other items also.
Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is... Sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Stay safe.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your help. Next item is 10B. Annual review and adoption of Laredo College Board Policy, CAK Local Appropriations and Revenue Source Investments. Mr. Cecil Vella?
Yes. Board members, as part of the annual requirement under section twenty-two fifty-six point zero zero five E of the Public Funds Investment Act, the board is required to review the district's investment policy and investment strategies that are set forth in the CAK Local, which is Appropriations and Revenue Resources Investments annually, not less than annually, and adopt the resolution, resolution reflecting the board's review and recording any changes made to the investment policy. For this fiscal year 2022, the only changes that are being made to the policy are modifications to section five point one, which title designation of investment officer. And this is just to make the, to reflect the correct title. The previous or the, the policy identified one of the investment officers as the Chief Financial Officer. That is being updated to now reflect the BP of Finance. And then the other modification is to section six point one, which is the open meeting date of when the policy was presented to the board for review. In this case, the change is to reflect the today's date, January twenty-seventh of 2022, as well as the modification to section six point two, which is the effective date of the policy. And again, that date would be today's date. We are required to, again, approve the resolution that's attached as part in your board packets. And I'll go out briefly, I'll read it out loud. Whereas section twenty-two fifty-six point zero zero five E of the Public Funds Investment Act, which is the Texas Government Code, Chapter twenty-two fifty-six, requires the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District to, A, review the district's investment policy and investment strategies set forth in CAK Local, not less than annually, and B, adopt this resolution reflecting the board's review and recording any changes made to the investment policy or strategies. Whereas the district's investment policy for fiscal year 2021, 2022 has been presented to the board for its consideration and approval as required by the act. And whereas the district's investment policy for fiscal year 2021, 2022 includes modifications to section five point one, designation of investment officer, modifications to section six point one, open meeting, and modifications to section six point two, the effective date. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District has reviewed the district's investment policy and hereby adopts the policy for fiscal year 2021, 2022 in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act adopted this twenty-seventh day of January twenty-two by the Board of Trustees.
Motion to approve the investment policy and the resolution, Madam Chair?
I have a motion by Ms. Matisse to approve. I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rella.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, 10C is approval of various room plaques at the Laredo College South College of Health Science Building. Dr. Noda Oregaza and Ms. Sara Ipampa.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Rodriguez de Kedina. I'm here today, forgive me, Sara Ipampa for the record. I'm here today to provide some information regarding the plaques that we're still pending for installation at our South Campus of the College of Health Sciences. If I may, just to give you a little bit of background info for the benefit of those board members that were not here when we first approved, approached the board for approval. Back in February of 2019, under the leadership of our then-college president, Dr. Ricardo De Solis, Mrs. Millie Slaughter and I approached this board to ask for your consideration and approval for the naming of four spaces that our College of Health Sciences Center upon completion to be dedicated to the four most generous donors that we've been working with that have partnered with Laredo College for a good while now. The four organizations being the Lamar Bunny Barrada Trust, the Laster of Key Harbor Trust, South Texas Outreach Foundation, and the Valuca and Lina Martinez Foundation. Collectively, and I was able to trace this back as far back as 2010, I'm sure it was, it happened way before, they have provided in excess of ten million dollars to the college. And so we figured that that was certainly worthy of a dedication of space at our new campus facility. So I went ahead and I provided, I reached out to four different vendors, these being Awardmasters, Corpus Christi Stamp Works, and South Texas Neon. Corpus Christi Stamp Works is actually the organization or the vendor that created the plaque that is currently installed at the College of Health Sciences. As you, as you enter, the building is on the left-hand side, right before you get to the hallway that leads to gateway. And so they're the ones that, that provided or that created that plaque. And so we do have the sample of plaques that we would like your consideration for so that we can move forward with this project. I've had a couple of administrators from the College of Health Sciences ask me if we had already moved or when we were going to be moving with this project. And so I went ahead and I solicited the vendor quotes. And so now I stand before you to ask for your consideration for us to move forward with this, with this project.
Excellent. Madam Chair. Second.
So I have a motion by Judge Martinez. I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any, any discussion? Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Are we going with both these quotes or this is?
No, we, we are required to submit three quotes and then we get the one that is more favorable to the institution, the one that is best to work with.
Is there any other local companies that are able to provide a quote rather than companies from outside?
You, you know what? When I first took on this task, I visited with Mr. Homer Feis from the South Campus. He's the construction project manager. And I asked him if he had the information on the vendor that provided or that, that created the plaque that is currently at the, at the South Campus, the one that has the architect, the board listing and all of that. And he's the one that said, you know what, Corpus Christi Stamp Works are the ones that worked with this plaque. And so he provided that information for me. And I asked him if there were any others that he may have possibly worked within the past that he could recommend. And so that's how we came across with these three, these three quotes.
Well, two of them are local.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
They, they have not done work for us before?
I, not to my knowledge, but I know Mr. Feis did say that he had worked with Awardmasters and the South Texas Neon recommendation came from our marketing department.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 10B. Status of Laredo College District Board Members Required Training As for Texas Education, Code Section sixty-one dot zero eight four, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero zero five and two-zero-five-four dot five-one-nine-one, and Legal Policies, BBD Legal. Board Members Orientation and Training, and BI Legal Reports. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez de Kedina.
Maricela de Kedina, interim president for the record. Yes, thank you, Chair. We do have to record as per BBD Legal and BI Legal updates concerning our board members and the mandatory trainings. And if you can see in your packets, I'm very proud to say, and I do thank the board, that we are in compliance with the cybersecurity training that was required for 2021, 2022. So I do want to thank you all for the time that you all did voluntarily to comply with this legal training. And, and in your documents, you have also the updated TGCB training, Open Meetings Act, and the investment training. So as of this year, we're in compliance and anything from the past, we're working with board members to, to ensure that we're in compliance. But we are in compliance for the 2021, 2022 for the cybersecurity training. Thank you. Any questions?
This is an excellent.
Do we need to approve it? Resting? Does any approval?
Yes, you should approve this, which I know, I agree. I recommend approving.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Rangel. Second. By Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 10E. Approval of Board Members Travel and Reimbursement of Reasonable Travel Expenses. As for Laredo College Board Policies, BBG Local, Board Members Compensation and Expenses, and BBH Local, Board Members Conventions, Conferences, and Workshops, Board of Trustees Institute. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez de Kedina.
Maricela de Kedina, for the record, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board that the Texas Success Center is hosting the Board of Trustees Institute Strategic Pathways for Economic Mobility in San Antonio that will be hosted March first and second. They will supply or support a free hotel and, for the most part, all meals. And we are able to take up to two board members. So I wanted to extend the invitation as to who on the board would be interested in going. Anybody that would be interested in attending, it will more or less, the reimbursement would be about less than a hundred and fifty dollars, which really includes the mileage that we would be spending to reimburse the, the board members. And nothing else. Is that correct? That's correct.
Is any board member interested in going? March first and second in San Antonio. No? No one is interested?
I'm having a surgery that day, otherwise I'd go.
Are we obligated to go, Dr. De Kedina?
We are not obligated, but they certainly are extending an invitation. An invitation to support two board members and, and their hotel and registration fee.
Will we go back to your offices and you track and you're able to? Go ahead and let Dr. Kedina know.
Can, I, I guess if you can make the vote because the registration, we have to put the, the registration for next week. So I'd rather that the board approve.
Approve it.
If, if there's board members that, that comes to the office that are interested.
So I have a, a motion by Mr. Delgado. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Elizondo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is 10F. Adopt Resolution Supporting Applications to Become a Usage-Driven Foreign Trade Zone. Number ninety-four designation. I'll defer this to Mr. J.B. Delgado. And 10F1 is Unimax Trade and Logistics LLC, located at one-three-six-zero-four Interstate thirty-five, Greenwich Road, Laredo, Texas. And at two, Transplace, Mexico, located at one-zero-seven Ross Calady Road, Laredo, Texas. Mr. Delgado?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, and just so that I can confirm with Dr. Maricela, I'm going to ask that we defer this particular agenda item just to confirm that we're going to get some presentation and some further instructions or further information from the Webb County Appraisal District in regards to these foreign trade zones.
Okay. So I have a, a motion by Ms. Matisse to defer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Vela. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have information items. Eleven A is Laredo Clean Air Coalition Update. Ms. Tricia Cortez was supposed to be here. And she...
Chairman Maricela de Kedina, for the record, they reported to us they will not be making a presentation under informational items for tonight.
Thank you. Next item is eleven B. Enrollment Update. Ms. Andrea Lopez. You're on.
Good evening, board members. LC Administration meeting attendees. My name is Andrea Lopez, Associate Dean of Enrollment Management and Student Success for the record. And I will be providing an update on our spring 2022 enrollment. And I must say I have some good news to share.
Great.
All right, so let's get started. So these are still preliminary numbers. Although we have closed registration as of Friday, January twenty-first, students still have an opportunity to make schedule changes up until the twelfth class date or our census date, which is February second. So these are the numbers as of five-thirty this evening. So in traditional student enrollment for the spring 2022 semester, we are at four thousand two hundred and fifty-seven in head count. This is a ten point seven percent increase from where we were in the spring of 2021. For dual credit, we are at four thousand four hundred and seventy-two, which is a three point one percent decrease. But in speaking with Dean Alberto Adnanbiss, he assured me that the decrease was attributed to COVID restrictions. So there has been some limitations in the availability of testing that the districts are able to provide for their students. And that is a critical component in being able to... And that is a critical component in being able to place them into the program. Um, we also have had some courses that are being offered, um, online as opposed to face-to-face and that has posed some challenges for the districts. So that is part of the reason why, um, that number is, uh, a decrease. But when you look at the dual credit enrollment compared to our traditional student enrollment, it's still much higher. Um, so, uh, based on, on Dean Albert Adnanbass's assessments, he does feel that these numbers will begin to increase as, um, things hopefully will begin to normalize. Um, and so we are, we're anxious to see what, um, the summer and fall will bring. So for winter master, as mentioned previously, we did have an increase. So we had four hundred and thirty-nine, um, student headcount enrollment, which was a fifteen percent increase from last winter master. And I'm also happy to report that in terms of our credit hours and contact hours, which are tied to funding, those are also experiencing increases. Um, so overall, um, this is good news. Um, and even though the numbers are still subject to change, we do not anticipate there to be, um, much fluctuation in the numbers. So I'll entertain any questions right now if there are any.
Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Delgado.
Yes, uh, thank you so much for this presentation. Definitely great news. Uh, I guess my only question is, uh, online versus in person? What does that look like?
In terms of where the?
In terms of student enrollment.
In terms of student enrollment. I'll defer to Dr. Tijerina or? Dr. Arizola?
Online or, online versus in person? In person, oh. Or if you can, if you don't have that information handy with you.
We can certainly.
Just present it to the board, uh, or send it in an email just to update on the board, just to see as far as where our numbers are with regards to our online, online courses.
Chair recognizes Dr. Arizola.
David Arizola, interim president, vice president for academic comparison compliance for the record. So right now, um, we have about three hu- three thousand three hundred and thirty-four students that are enrolled in distance classes only. So that's very, have an exclusively, uh, distance schedule.
What was that number? What was that number?
Thirty-three, thirty-four. Now, we, we, just kind of, we can give you the exact number, it's kind of looking at, there's probably another, um, thousand that are taking at least one distance class. So they might be taking a mix of in-person classes and, uh, distance learning class. I know, Dr. Tijerina will clarify that.
Yes, and I, I, he's correct that when we say distance, uh, only, there's three thousand three hundred, three, three thousand three hundred and thirty-four. However, I'll give you the breakdown. I'll send you an email because in the distance learning, it's completely online or hybrid. And so I need to break down the three thousand three hundred and, three thousand three hundred and thirty-four out of how many of those would be hybrid? When they're hybrid, that means that class, they, they do half of it online and half face-to-face. So I'll give you a further breakdown of the distance. So Dr. Arizola is correct, but there's still, there's still a further breakdown of those numbers. And I'll have it ready for you.
And can you also include as far as the breakdown with, between full-time and part-time? Sorry if I'm asking a lot. Nope?
No, and I'll make a note of that and I'll make sure to also include that and have it ready for the next enrollment update.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ronhead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, great news, Ms. Lopez, honestly. Um, on the increase of the fif- of the ten-point-seven percent on traditional, where do we hit, where, 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 where was the? Where, in what section was it like the highest peaks? Would you happen to know that?
In terms of what course?
Yes, yes.
Um, I don't have that information, but it is something that I can retrieve. Um, so then I can provide that via email as well.
The same report as that one?
Absolutely.
The other question that I have, can you explain to, what, what did you mean about restrictions on the dual? Is it because the students are not being able to test or because they're not being able to test negative or what is the reason for that?
Um, I was referring to TSI testing.
Oh.
Uh, and so in order for them to be eligible to participate in the program, they do need to, um, uh, take the TSI test. For some of them, they are eligible for the TSI waiver, um, that we have been able to use, but some of them have not met the criteria. Uh, and so once testing becomes more, um, accessible, because the districts are the ones who are testing students, then we do expect for that number to increase.
And have we asked them if they're expecting students to be testing anytime soon?
The expectation was yes, um, but as the pandemic continues to, you know, evolve and, and then that poses its own set of challenges. So we were actually expecting, um, for the enrollment to be very similar to where we were last year by this time, but we couldn't have anticipated some of the, the limitations that the districts had.
Sorry. And just to inform the board, you know, yeah, I work for the school district. So we have, and I do understand why the, the, the decrease, because us, you know, in the school district, we are, we are close to a little bit over thirty-five-hundred students that still have not returned back to, to, to school. So, um, I, I bet that that has a lot, that, that triples a lot into, into ours. So, um, I, I, you know, that's, I guess that's a huge reason also why, you know, we also are getting hit a little bit on, on the dual. So, but that's great news either way. Uh, I'm, I'm very happy. That's a great job from staff and from everybody to bring in more traditional, great job.
If I may add, Chair, um, I just reviewed, um, the course enrollment for the departments. The ones that have the highest enrollment are always going to be our academic departments from Social and Behavioral Science Department, which is all the psychology, sociology, history, government, then, uh, natural sciences, all the science courses, English and math. Academics are always, um, uh, at the highest enrollment. And just to, so that we have the breakdown, although tomorrow morning I will send you the, the specific figures. We do have currently six hundred and thirty-six sections of face-to-face, four hundred and six sections of completely online, one hundred and eighty-three of hybrid. So we still have predominantly more face-to-face than, uh, completely online. But when you compare six hundred and thirty-six to four oh six, you know, they're almost balanced.
And.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
The numbers you just gave me, those are for, from dual enrollment? Or?
Those are combined with dual enrollment.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the information.
I still have more.
Oh, okay.
So I would be remiss if I did not recognize, um, and, and honestly, honestly, enrollment and registration, that is an institution-wide effort. Um, but I do have to give special, uh, thanks to some departments that really, um, went above and beyond to help us. Uh, you know, the Omicron variant did, um, cause some shortages in, in our, um, our manpower. And so we had to call on other offices, like the Learning Center, um, the Library, Student Life, um, to ask for their help so that they can help us, uh, you know, screen students, triage the lines, just so that we could assure, um, and guarantee students a good experience while they were here on campus. Um, I also want to thank all of the, um, directors and the enrollment staff, um, because we were working extended hours. Uh, we were here till Fri- on Friday until six o'clock. Um, and then during the week up until eight o'clock, some offices nine o'clock. And so I just want to recognize that we also had a team of advisors who volunteered their weekend and their MLK holiday so that we could catch up. We had a hundred and fifty emails that were in our queue. Um, and so upon sharing this, you know, we had staff volunteer their time so that we could finish all of those emails, get that done. And actually, I believe Cash had also, uh, volunteered, um, his time to help us. And so it could not have been without all of this collaboration and teamwork. We could not have accomplished this. Um, and so I do want to just, again, special thanks to, uh, Dean Banyan, her area, uh, Dean Ortiz, um, and the recruitment team because they, they really were instrumental in, in helping us, um, provide and offer a good student experience for students. I also want to provide a quick financial aid update. Um, I'm also very, uh, excited to be here to announce that for the first time ever, uh, we're actually going to, we're now, uh, able to award and provide an award letter to students. Last year, um, our, um, what we call the rollover, the financial aid rollover process took place in late April. This time around, it took place, uh, January fourth. We were able to complete that. And so what this means is that we can now, for students who have completed their FAFSA, they can log on to their passport student account, go to Campus Logic, and they can see exactly how much financial aid they can expect to receive from the college. And this is going to be instrumental in helping our recruitment efforts because now when students are trying to decide between different institutions, we can give them exact figures. And I have to give, um, a lot of credit and, and kudos and recognition to the Financial Aid Director, Mr. Stephen Aguilar, for having this vision. When I started my career here at LC, I was a financial aid outreach specialist and the rollover process happened in July. And I was out at the high schools and there were other institutions that were already providing award letters and we didn't have much to show. And so for me to, to now know that we are able to tell students, you already completed the financial aid application, let's log in and see exactly how much you stand to receive, that is, um, such a great accomplishment. And so this could not have been possible if our financial aid team didn't work during the winter holiday. So on top of, um, assisting students for winter master, they were also working alongside some of our IT professionals to make this rollover possible for students. Um, and so, uh, I just want to, to say how excited I am that we can, um, now provide this for students and I hope that you share that with students as they come to you and they let you know that they're completing their FAFSA application. Please, please let them know, come visit us at the financial aid office or anybody in the enrollment team and we'll show them how, um, they can log in and receive that award letter. Um, so again, just a special thanks to the financial rollover team, um, Mr. Stephen Aguilar, Sylvia Garza from IT, Maria Estela Garcia, Rosana Huerta, Gabriel Martinez from IT, Ernestina Perez, Claudia Monica Rodriguez, and Ramiro Rodriguez. Um, I also want to inform you that we will be having a financial aid event for our continuing students, but we've also extended an invitation to LISD High School Seniors. And this will take place on Saturday, February twelfth. Um, and so it is open, again, yes, we are inviting a special, or extending a special invitation to LISD, but really it's a community event. And so, um, every, anybody who's, uh, interested in LC, in LC, uh, they can, you know, come by and we'll help them complete their FAFSA or we can help them retrieve their award letter. And so we will be, again, available at Lermapeña, February twelfth, that is a Saturday, from ten AM to two PM. And finally, um, last but not least, continuing education enrollment is also very healthy. Um, and we do have a thirty-two-point-two percent increase from where we were, um, quarter two of last year. So right now we do have a total headcount of six hundred and twenty-four. And just so you have an idea of our most popular programs, um, the one with the highest enrollment is Computer Information Systems with a hundred and seventy-eight. Criminal Justice comes in second with one-twenty-nine. Occupational Safety and Hazard Technology at eighty-nine, Accounting sixty-two, and Dental Assisting Assistant thirty-six. And we do have our schedule available, which is, um, our Continuing Education Catalog. It is available on our website. And we also have, um, paper brochures available for students at Lermapeña, the enrollment offices, and then also the Continuing Education Department at the Lloyd Garcia. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
Uh, thank you, um, Ms. Lopez. I mean, your enthusiasm gets so contagious, I just, I'm just jumping out of my chair right now, okay? But, uh, for the rest of the board members, the, uh, Student Success Committee meeting met on Monday and, uh, Ms. Elizondo was there and Ms. Afra as well. And we heard this information and then some from Ms. Lopez. There's so many great things happening as we're pushing all our objectives and strategic goals for student success, which encompasses all these things, you know, the enrollment, the advising and how this whole group of, of administrators and staff, faculty are coming together to ensure that our students meet their, their goals in life. And so, uh, she, she did a great presentation. We're going to share it with you all at the next meeting, but I just wanted to say kudos to you, you know, for, uh, also your energy, your enthusiasm, your commitment to this institution and to ensuring that, that our students meet that, their success goals in life. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very fortunate to have a very strong team.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I wanted to echo what Ms. Maris said. It's, you're so energetic and just, just your energy. So I'm not surprised that our numbers are decreasing and it's definitely an illustration of y'all's, uh, personalities and hard work. So congratulations.
Thank you.
There are no further questions?
Anyone else?
Great job.
Congratulations.
Uh, thank everybody that was involved in all of this. Keep up the great work. Uh, the members are showing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do want to say also, I forgot to mention, special thanks to the board. We could not have, this rollover could not have been possible if you had not approved the academic calendar in October. And so there are a lot of moving parts. Um, and so we, we're going to continue, we want to, you know, push that rollover date, um, even sooner. And so none of that would have been possible if, if, you know, you hadn't, um, approved that, the, the academic calendar for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three years. So thank you to you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be a part of your team.
I know, right?
Jim Lopez. The next item is elevenC, Notification Of The Webb County and Fracile District Twenty-Twenty-One Board Director Selection. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina.
Maricela Tijerina, for the record. Hello? I wanted to inform the board that we did receive a letter from Mr. Martin Villarreal in regards to Section six-oh-three of the Texas Property Tax Code, which directs a chief appraiser to count the votes and declare the five candidates who received the largest cumulative votes, uh, total selected. And, um, in the letter, he specifies that our very own, Mr. Jorge JD Delgado is, uh, ha- got the total votes that we submitted, which is five hundred and nineteen votes. Uh, Mr. Jesse Gonzalez, nine hundred and thirteen, Vanessa Perez, a thousand and six, Juan Aramirez, a thousand and sixty-five, and Ricardo Rodriguez with a thousand and sixty-six. It also mentions, um, uh, Mr. Delgado as one of the five elected, uh, Board of Directors, as well as that his term will be, or began, January first, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Yes, they definitely put me to work starting January first. Uh, but thanks to my colleagues, uh, this board specifically for, for allowing me the opportunity to represent, uh, the college and specifically the board with the Webb County Appraisal District. Uh, we had our first meeting last week, which is a very informative, uh, meeting, went through the, you know, similar processes of making sure to certify, uh, those election results that were there. Uh, I'm proud to announce that I was, uh, actually asked and elected to serve as the Secretary for the Board of Directors for the Webb County Appraiser District. So definitely grateful, uh, for that opportunity. And, uh, at this point, they are in the process, or we're in the process of selecting a new chief appraiser. As you know, Mr. Martin Villarreal is retiring, uh, and I believe he's going to be retiring at the end of March. And so we're in the process of selecting a new, uh, chief appraiser, which we will decide hopefully next week. And I will be sure to update the board, uh, on those, uh, on those decisions that are made. So thank you again, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you for representing us. Any other questions? So the next item is executive session and I need to ask you to bear with me. The first item is twelveA pursuant to Section five-five-one dot zero seven-one of the Texas Government Code. Close session discussion for consideration of approval of U.S. Customs and Border Protection requests for write-off entry on Laredo College property for survey and site assessment. TwelveB pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot zero seven-one. Close session consultation with legal counsel to discuss the matter in which the Texas disciplinary rules conflict with the provisions of Chapter five-five-one of the Government Code. TwelveC, Discussion With Laredo College District Attorney Concerning Laredo College President's Recommendation To Terminate The Employment Of A Laredo College Tenured Track Faculty Member. of a Laredo College Tenure-Track Faculty Member as per Board Policy, DMAA Local Term Contracts Termination Mid-Contract and DMAA Legal Term Contracts Termination Mid-Contract, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. 12D Is Discuss Legal Issues with Laredo College Attorney Regarding Real Property Donation Agreement Incident to Laredo College Participation in the City of Laredo Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Terms Number Two, Also Known as the Coves at Winfield Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072. Next item is 12E, Close Session, Close Session, sorry, Meaning Concerning the Status of the Process to Fill the Laredo College Chief of Police Position, Including a Discussion of Legal Issues with Laredo College Attorney Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. Do I have a motion to go to Executive Session? So I have a motion by Mr. Delgado, and I have a second by Mr. Frank Henn. All in favor?
Aye.
So we will be in Executive Session, and we will be returning when we're done. Thank you.
We're going to reconvene from our executive closed session. And the board took no action in executive session. Or take appropriate action. On items necessary. As discussed in closed session. For the record, Ms. Jackie Ramos has joined our board meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. So we're going to start with 13, discussion of possible action. 13A, consideration of approval of U.S. custom and border protection requests. For right of entry on Laredo College property for survey and site assessment. Do you have a motion? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike, motion that we authorize our legal counsel and of course our college president to proceed as we discussed in executive session. The motion carries. Second item is 13B, considering take possible action to waive a potential conflict of interest in connection with the Title IX investigation. Do you still have a motion? Chair calls Mr. Muir. Please.
I move to authorize Counsel Craig Wood to provide legal advice to the interim college president in regards to the Title IX investigation.
So I have a motion by Ms. Marius, and I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? No discussion heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item is 13B, considering take possible action to waive a potential conflict of interest in connection with the Title IX investigation. Do you still have a motion? Oh, Chair calls Mr. Muir. Please.
I move to authorize Counsel Craig Wood to provide legal advice to the interim college president in regards to the Title IX investigation.
So I have a motion by Ms. Marius, and I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is number 14, presidents' reports. Dr. DeHidia, do you have any? Marius, so that be heading up for the record there in your pocket, the board members, the reports. Oh, okay. So any questions, concerns? Okay, nothing heard. Our next meeting date will be Thursday, February 24, 2022, at 6:00 p.m., regular board trustees meeting. Do you have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Mr. Rangel. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.